I bring Jackson Public School Board Meeting, September 19th, 2017. I proudly bring this school board to order this evening. We've been in turbulent times for the last few weeks, but one thing I have seen is a resounding voice that we support JPS from the community, from the students, from stakeholders, actually from around the world via internet. So we thank you for your support. We thank you for all the words of encouragement and we're moving on and moving forward. We just want to say thank you for all the great things that the support people are doing across the city and the nation, including our mayor. Now we will have our pledge of allegiance and that is going to be presented by Mrs. Thomas, Area Two.
Good afternoon. Dr. Murray, Ms. Simmons, Board President and Board Members. I am going to introduce Ms. Natalia Wrangle. Her mother is Ms. Anna Wrangle. She attends Wingfield High School. The principal is Mr. Rodrick Smith. Assistant Principals are Mr. Gatlin, Ms. Kelly, and Dr. Washington. Natalia is a sophomore at Wingfield High School. She is part of the Wingfield High School's Mentor Program, which helps to encourage their fellow peers to get acclimated to the Wingfield way. With this program, they assist the students academically through tutoring and talk sessions. Natalia is currently trying out for the Wingfield Socrates to complete her goal of becoming a well-rounded student. Natalia aspires to become a bilingual educator. She plans to attend the University of Florida to fulfill her goal.
Would you wait here one moment for us and we do appreciate us with that cultural pledge of allegiance. Mrs. Wrangle, did you have anybody with you? And I believe we have the Wingfield Principal, Mr. Smith. Thank you so much. We appreciate your service to us. Now we are going to be have a word of inspiration from our own Bishop Ronnie Crutop Senior. My colleague, Mr. Jones, will give an introduction.
Bishop Ronnie Crutop Senior. Ronnie Crutop Senior is a senior pastor of New Arriving Church International, which he started in 1987. Bishop Crutop earned his Bachelor of Science degree from Jackson State University and holds a Master of Divinity degree from Reformed Theological Seminary. Bishop Crutop has celebrated over forty years of his life with First Lady Jacqueline Crutop. Together they have four grown children, eight young grandchildren. Currently Bishop Crutop and First Lady Crutop reside in South Jackson. Please welcome Bishop Crutop.
Thank you.
And just a point of order, by the way, all eight of my grandchildren go to Jackson Public Schools. To Dr. Murray, to the Chair, and to all the board and staff of Jackson Public Schools and to all of you here. The word of inspiration today is two-fold and very, very quick. You know, these are days of adversity. The scripture talks about that in the Old Testament, the Book of Proverbs 24 and 10. And a part of that thought is this, first this, that in the days of adversities, interesting things happen. And I think that, once again, one of our chair has already mentioned that. Everybody knows about this now. Everybody is aware. And I believe that everybody understands that we're in this together. If you are a citizen of Jackson, Mississippi, if you are somebody that cares about this city, about children in this city, then you care about what happens here at Jackson Public Schools. And that is a good thing. Because if nothing else, this whole adverse circumstance has frankly galvanized this city together. And we understand that we must come together and work together, once again, to make this school system the very best that it can be. Is it a day of change? Well, no doubt about that. But the other part of my thought is this, because that scripture also says that if you faint in the day of adversity, then your strength is small. I want to encourage Dr. Murray and to all of you board members that this is a day and a time to stand tall, not to faint, not to shrink back, not to lay down, but understand that you do have this city behind you. We absolutely care about what happens here at Jackson Public Schools and that we are here to support, once again, this public school system and ensuring, once again, that our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren, once again, get absolutely what they deserve, and that's the very best. And so, in the day of adversity, don't faint. Once again, the scripture says if you do, then your strength is small. Let's show that together, we've got the collective strength to be able to accomplish all things, the things that needs to be accomplished, so that, once again, at the end of the day, our children get absolutely what they deserve, the very best education humanly possible. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Crutop, if you would just wait one moment, we want to give you a small token of your appreciate, of our appreciation, and we thank you for standing with us through the years. We do have a quorum. We have one of our colleagues, Mr. Jed Oppenheim, coming via phone tonight. So we have all four.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Thank you. All right. Now can I get an adoption for the board agenda, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones, move. Mrs. Johnson, second. Board Agenda Adoption. Reading. Now we're going to have a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Reading an approval of minutes from the September 5th, and we'll do it separately, then we'll go to the September 8th. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Johnson, move. Mr. Oppenheim, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Unanimous. Now we move for the adoption of the approved minutes from the September 8th meeting work session. May I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Jones, move. Mrs. Johnson, second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. Again, that's unanimous. Okay, now we are moving down to public participation.
Board Members, you have two persons who've signed up this evening to address you. First is Ursula Hendricks, who would like to speak regarding the JPS takeover and school name change.
My name is Ursula Hendricks. This is my daughter Farah.
Hi.
First of all, I just want to thank the board and Dr. Murray for just an excellent representation last week and to let you know that my family is behind you and we are supporting JPS wholeheartedly and fully. The next item I wanted to talk about was, I am a Jefferson Davis Magnet parent. I have Farah Ashley was enrolled there until she went to Northwest, and then we have little Ty, who is back there somewhere. And I have my notes with me because I can be long-winded, and so I wanted to be concise and precise. So we have been Davis Magnet parents since how all this began in 2010, and I'm here requesting the JPS Board of Trustees consider changing the names of schools named for leaders of the Confederacy, specifically Jefferson Davis Elementary. When Farah was in sixth grade, she read a book about Jefferson Davis, Our School's Namesake. And understandably, she was bothered by the fact that the school was named after a former leader of the Confederacy. She asked us to help her change the name of the school. Needless to say, we wholeheartedly agreed with her because we felt that Jefferson Davis, who was an eloquent defender of slavery, is not a true reflection of the values our school teaches and the learner profile we work hard to develop every day. The Board Guidelines for Name Changes stipulate that the schools and facilities should be renamed after persons of good character and prominence who have made outstanding contributions to the school system. Special consideration will be given to those names that have special meaning to students and citizens. I don't have a specific name to replace it, but I'm sure our PTA will come up with a name that adequately represents what we teach at Davis Magnet. And so I thank you for your time and ask that you strongly consider renaming our schools after persons who have made outstanding contributions to this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Akimi Stout. Subject of comments is media, teachers, employees, and students.
Good evening, Board, and any guests that are here today. First, we're the members of Jackson Federation of Teachers Local 4402. We're the union of American Federation Teachers here in Mississippi. We support Jackson Public Schools. We support all the schools in Jackson Public Schools, and we also support all of the employees. It appears that the media has more influence over what happens in education here in Jackson than the actual stakeholders. Since we know that, why not use the media and/or the newly-approved system for communication to express to all employees of Jackson Public Schools and parents and students what the potential harm is if to them, if there is any harm, or to the students, what an actual takeover would actually do. As you know, there's been a lot of harm done to the district from what has been stated and what has not been clearly stated. We understand that there are issues and are willing to and ready to assist the district in addressing any areas of need that our organization can extend to you, such as First Book, which will be free to the district to bring in forty thousand books. There are many other things that we have, and I've spoken to other administrators about that, and I'm sure once they can move forward, we will do so. Our students are our greatest asset. I implore you to please send an email blast, a Facebook post, Twitter post, Instagram, a video of a personable person that gives the hope to move forward and know that it ain't done until it's done. What I mean by that, we went through the formalities on the 13th and the 14th, right? We went through that. It's not done. It's not done until the governor signs it. And until he signs it, the district is still going on, business is still being taken care of, and we need not to have anybody in any classroom, I'm speaking from a parent's perspective, to tell a child, such as this child, my nine-year-old child, that there is going to be someone to come and take their school. I take that personally. No one needs to tell children that. Our children need to know that they can believe in us, and as parents, we need to know that we can believe in you. You did a great job last week. Please send something out to the community and let the community know that the district is still handling business and let them know the process. On Thursday of this week, my organization is going to let our members know how this can and what actually happens, because there are a lot of things that have not been told and they don't know. All of six of my kids came through Jackson Public Schools, and they're doing very well. So I don't think this is a bad school district, and I don't want my child to come and ask me, "Mama," again, "Are you going to allow them to take our district? Are they going to take my school?" So I'm just speaking from the perspective of a parent and someone who does support the district. Please send something out, communicate something to the parents and to the community as to what the district is doing and in that process, so that a lot of this harm that is being done, and they're looking to Facebook, they're looking everywhere else, but they haven't heard anything from the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stout. That's all. Thank you.
I have a question, just real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Oppenheim.
Thanks, Mrs. Stevens. Dr. Murray, can we get something out tomorrow to inform parents and employees about where things are and what they need to know to, as per Dr. Stout's request, I think that's a really important request, and I think we need to honor that via all channels of communication that we have.
We've actually posted what we have on our website. Again, and at this point, the information that we've posted is the information that we have. Once we receive additional information, we will definitely keep the parents, students, and the community informed. But at current time, the information that we have, we have posted on our website so that parents can access that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to make a comment because the state said that we were in, the words that they used was, "an extreme emergency." Education is still going on. We are still promoting and advocating for our students daily. So Dr. Murray and his staff are still doing the job of educating, and we're following all standards as we go forward. So even though the state has made a statement, we're making a statement daily that we're educating and our students are learning, and we're about that business of learning. So it is on the website, just on that leading page, as to where we can go. And it's a pretty nice, concise article that states what the next positions are as well. So we do thank you, Ms. Stout and the community, for wanting to know. Now we're going to move on to review of discipline cases.
No cases.
No cases, all right. There's just one bad flight in here. All right. Now we're down to the superintendent's reports and announcements.
First, I'd just like to take a moment to thank you, Pastor Crutop, awesome message, and we definitely want to keep that spirit as we move forward of collaboration. Greetings to board members, JPS administrators, staff, parents, community partners in attendance this evening. These are my announcements. The Junior League of Jackson awards $123,000 in mini-grants to JPS schools. The Junior League of Jackson and the Community Foundation of Greater Jackson awarded twenty grants totaling $123,321 to fifteen JPS schools today. The Jackson Public Schools Mini-Grants funds teachers, teachers, teens, and school projects to enhance, enrich, and support the JPS educational curriculum for students in grades K through 12. Selected from ninety-nine applications, the 2017-18 grantees represent fifteen different JPS schools. Grant awards range from $300 to $10,000. Schools receiving grants included Blackburn Laboratory Middle, Boyd Elementary, Capital City Alternative, Clausell Elementary, Dawson Elementary, George Elementary, Key Elementary, Lee Elementary, McWillie Elementary, North Jackson Elementary, Oak Forest Elementary, Smith Elementary, Span Elementary, Timberline Elementary, and Watkins Elementary. This program started in 1988. The program assists in providing funding for schools, classrooms, and teen projects. The Community Foundation of Greater Jackson began partnering with the Junior League of Jackson in 2004, and together, these organizations have provided more than a million dollars in grant funding over the years. So we'd like to celebrate this process today and give a round of applause to Junior League JPS JROTC Cadet selected for National Youth Council. At this time, we'd like Cadet Ruben Banks to come forward, please. The Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, selected Cadet Ruben Banks, a junior JROTC Cadet, Jim Hill High School, as one of fifteen national selectees for the 2017 through 2019 Youth Preparedness Council. This group met with FEMA leaders in Washington, DC in July to make plans for the year ahead. Cadet Banks completed a selective prestigious engineering program with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers in Vicksburg last summer. Cadet Banks also holds a range of leadership roles with the Civil Air Patrol. As part of the Civil Air Patrol Mississippi Wing, Banks is a member of the Cadet Advisory Council, the Wing Honor Society. He has led the charge for the organization to require each member to become emergency certified or ground team members for the Mississippi Wing. Cadet Banks was among twenty-four other JPS JROTC cadets who participated in the Jackson State University Interdisciplinary Center for Nanotacticity Summer Institute. He has also participated along with forty-five other JPS cadets in the Jackson Department of Youth Citizens Academy Federal Court Watch Program, which was conducted by the Jackson Police Academy at the U.S. Federal Courthouse in Jackson. In 2016, he was selected as the top student at the Military Order of World War's Youth Leadership Council in Huntsville, Alabama. The program drew students from across Mississippi, Alabama, Arkansas, and Tennessee. Please join me with a round of applause in recognizing this outstanding scholar for leadership. Now, final announcement for tonight. We have a special presentation from Siemens, and at this time, we'd like Mr. Matt Ridley and Charlie Cohen to come forward and give us some information on this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Murray, and board members. We, of course, have had the pleasure of working with you guys for the last fifteen or sixteen years, and I want to applaud the leadership that your board and your staff have shown in bringing us to where we are tonight with what we're going to produce. And I want to introduce Charlie Cohen, our National Director of Sustainability Education, to make the presentation.
Thank you for having me, Ms. Sims and Superintendent Murray. Thank you very much. Siemens Building Technologies has recognized that merely fulfilling a contract in a vendor-vende relationship is not truly a partnership. Siemens believes that it has an obligation to society to participate in the education of its children. And as such, for the past ten years, I've been fortunate enough to do projects across this country to support education at both the K-12 and university level, as well as workforce development initiatives. One of the things we have found is that it takes a community to educate children. It takes a coordinated effort to educate children. One of the programs that we're involved with is the National STEM Funders Network. And the National STEM Funders Network is a series of foundations and large businesses that support the development of local STEM ecosystems. What it tries to do is say the children are the center of our learning experience and that everything we do in the community should come together in a coordinated way to support that education. And that means schools partnering with businesses, partnering with corporations, partnering with local government, partnering with foundations, local foundations, agencies, but not just so that each group goes off and does its own thing, that we all come together as a group to discuss how can we support the teaching and learning that goes on in the classroom. I had the fortune of working in Illinois for thirty-three years as a public educator, as a teacher, as a principal, and then as an assistant superintendent for business. In this role, I have been able to deal with the corporate side of this and bring the passion of the educator to this and work with Siemens at bringing financial support. So at three levels of our corporation, we are supporting this event. One is our local branch is contributing. Two, our corporate program from the Sustainability Education Program is contributing to this. And three, our Business to Society: Caring Hands Program is contributing to this. And to support this project, we are going to actively participate in bringing an organization called the Teacher Institute for Excellence in STEM to work with your staff, with your teachers, identified faculty, to bring the community together in an organized way to help advance opportunities in workforce development and science, technology, but looking at it more in terms of project-based inquiry instruction, so that we work with your principals and teachers to help develop the program. And I'll stop at that point. You have to have a ceremonial check. And present, I would love to present this to the board, a $35,000 check. Is it upside down? I can't ever do anything without. A $35,000 check to get this process started. A $35,000 check to get this process started, so that we have, the district has the resources to support the project.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Matt. We certainly appreciate this. We have been collaborating together. Uh-oh. We have been collaborating together several months, and I am just delighted that we have been able to start this initiative to encourage our young people to be involved, not only just our young people, but the corporations, the city leaders, just the whole ecosystem. So we're glad that you all are in Jackson.
Me too.
Thank you.
That concludes the superintendent's report.
So, uh, normally when children are behind in grade level, or they perform poorly, they read poorly, they're at risk for dropping out. And so, this policy is just before you for review. It's part of the cap. Uh, we said we would review a section of our policies each month, and we're on Section J.
All right, do we have any comments at this point, board members?
I, I just wanted to thank, uh, Ms. Shepherd for going back in and looking at JTN and saying, on interrogation and changing some of that language.
You're welcome.
All right, if that is all, we're gonna now move on to information, uh, action items. Do we need to get a vote on those?
We also had the other policies that are for review.
Okay.
I'll be, and I'll just run through those quickly.
All right.
JBJ, the promotion-retention policy removes the social promotion interrogations that Mr. Oppenheimer alluded to, uh, says that we will, uh, try our level best to notify parents prior to interrogations by law enforcement agencies, as long as we don't obstruct justice. Uh, early release, uh, says that only children who, uh, have completed all the requirements for graduation can participate in the early release program. And we added one that is not up there, but that Dr. Murray has been talking about quite, uh, frequently, and that's, uh, JBF, and it should be on your board material if it's refreshed, uh, which is the professional development policy. And those are just for, uh, revisions as well, and they'll be, those have actual changes to them that I've outlined, and they will be placed in the school for review and brought back.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Shepherd. We appreciate that, especially, um, the one with the goals and of the professional development being updated. Thank you. All right, um, so now we move on to information items, information action items. We ha- actually have three items here. Um, is there any board discussion on any A, B, C, A, B, or C? Would you all like to take all three of these together at this point, or do we need, um, further discussion? If not, I'd like to get a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we're gonna take item A, B, and C. Um, it's been, been moved and second, so now we're gonna get a vote. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, that will be a unanimous vote. Thank you. That brings us down to consent agenda items finance. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Ms. Sims, Dr. Murray. Members of the board, I present to you items, consent agenda items finance, A, B, C, and D. A is approval of disbursements, accounts payable, and activity fund claims for August twenty-sixth through September eighth, the recommendation to dispose of surplus property. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just doing A, B, and C. I'm so used to saying all of them. And also approval of C, various donations, and if I may read the donations for, uh, the public, to Casey Elementary School from Beth Williams, son of a teacher at the school, a HP desk jet eleven-twelve from her EEF cards, to McWillie Elementary School from Paige Kruger and Holler for the implementation of the Leader in Me grant, two thousand five hundred dollars, to Span Elementary, also from a teacher at the school, Jennifer Baker, through her EEF card, an HP laptop valued at two hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, and a Brother printer valued at fifty-nine ninety-nine for use in the library. A thirty-dollar gift card from Walmart for PBIS activities at Sywell Middle School from Walmart of Jackson, five hundred dollars from Latonye Bozeman, an Entergy employee, to Callaway High School for the football team, to Partners in Education, five thousand dollars from the Junior League of Jackson to purchase uniforms, a five hundred dollar gift card from the Jacks, Greater Jackson Arts Council for refreshments for the employees who work the superintendent's hotline, six thousand dollars from the Allstate Foundation to purchase supplies for the pie store, eight hundred dollars from Kroger to purchase supplies from the pie store, and three thousand seven hundred sixty-six dollars from Ms. Elise Norwood for books, from Books-A-Million for books at the pie store as well.
That is absolutely awesome. We appreciate our community partners for all those donations. All right, um, at this point, can we get a motion for the floor for A, B, and C?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mr. Oppenheimer, move. Mr. Jones, second. All in favor, please, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much. Mrs. Mrs. Miller?
Uh-huh.
Um, I'm not sure if this is the right spot or not. Um, there was a question when we were at MDE concerning funds not being expended. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, ma'am. Um, what was being specifically mentioned were some title funds, uh, about one point eight million dollars that we have left to spend. Districts receive twenty-seven months to expend the dollars that they are allocated for various Title I programs. Um, as a total, on ho- on average, this district receives almost fifteen million dollars per year in title, um, funds as Title I, Title II, um, funds that support our ELL students, fund to support school improvement, uh, teacher recruitment and retention. And so, um, we are, uh, at drawing close to the end of our twenty-seven months, which is, again, uh, perfectly allowable. The rule is that the funds have to be obligated by September thirtieth and expensed by December thirtieth, uh, December thirty-first, I'm sorry, of the, of the fifth fiscal year. At this point, we have about three hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars remaining in the bulk of those funds. We do have, um, almost about six hundred thousand dollars remaining in Title I, but those are tied up in salaries that will be expended and obligated at the end of the month. So, we are, um, and I can say in, in recent years, probably more than five or six, we have not returned any funds to the state unspent in title, uh, in any title program. So, we are, are not panicked, we are doing what we do, and we are still serving the students of this district. So, we are quite confident that we will have all those dollars expended, uh, in accordance with the, the requirements of the federal government.
So, I'm hearing you say for the last five-plus years, we've not turned in, back any money?
It's probably been longer than that. I just picked five. It's probably been closer to nine.
Nine years.
Um, we have not returned any unspent money in title. So, that's, it's, uh, it's, it's a process that we go by. Again, when you receive fifteen million dollars, it's not like you can just go out and just go to Walmart. It has to be, the expenses have to be tied to the school plans, they have to be tied to the needs of the students, and so it's not just, we can just go out and, and obligate money arbitrarily. It has to be tied to a program, it has to be tied to a school, it has to be tied to a project. So, um, we are deliberate in making sure that we are meeting the needs of our student as well as meeting the district plans that require how to spend those dollars. Um, you see a number of, um, contracts that come before you, those all have to be bid, those have to go through the vetting process, so we are, uh, on, on top of not sp- only spending the money, we have to spend the money correctly. So, we are certainly doing that, and, uh, we don't have any, uh, doubt that that will not be, uh, occurring at, by September thirtieth.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you saying that. Any other questions?
Yeah, please. Um, as you, as you mentioned, the type of activities or programs, training, and so on, that's, that, uh, can be used, how have, how are we, or what is the plan for using these funds toward, um, technology for our students? I noticed that, uh, I've been, had several questions come to me in reference to, uh, not having laptops or, or, so how can, i- is there provision, these title funds, that enable that use, or how can we do this, particularly as we look at the graduation, um, requirements have changed, and starting at that eighth grade? I know that that's a huge space that we have, as well as in our early years.
Yes, sir. Well, these dollars, some of these dollars are being utilized for technology, specifically Forest Hill. Uh, we've worked, uh, very closely with MDE to, uh, gain permission through, um, through our plan to spend, I think, about eighty-eight thousand dollars on, um, electronic devices for Forest Hill. So, a part of these dollars, uh, will go to, for that purpose.
I will say that we have a number of schools, probably ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent of our schools do expend their dollars on laptops and, um, smart boards and for medium boards. Um, right now, we're purchasing a lot of, um, laptop carts, which allow those to be moved around. Uh, we've used our title dollars for several years to pay the lease purchase on the Apple devices. As a matter of fact, that payment was just made today, it's about almost three hundred thousand dollars. So, those dollars, um, sometimes I even question, you know, we're spending a lot of money on technology in the classrooms from pre-K all the way through. So, those dollars are, are pretty well leveraged in our technology. The thing about those dollars is that you can only spend them on students. You can't buy technology for adults. So, any technology that you see that's being purchased with our title funds are being purchased specifically for students.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have, um, now, one additional item, item D.
Good afternoon. I'm basically here to answer any questions you might have regarding the project application that we submit to the Mississippi Department of Education.
Do we have any questions at this point?
Okay, I have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
All right, thank you. This is for, um, you say, application being submitted for which area?
It's for exceptional education. It's our funding source.
Okay. Okay.
And basically, it covers, um, like you were saying, technology, we, um, this, basically what we need for students to address their, um, their needs, like they might need, um, special touchscreen monitors, um, FM systems if they have a hearing impairment, anything to address our students with disability needs.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, can I get a motion for the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Jones, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Oppenheimer, and second by Mrs. Johnson. Um, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
All right, that is a unanimous vote. Thank you. All right, now we're moving on to consent agenda items general.
I'd like to talk about item C separately.
Okay. Does anybody else want to pull any other?
Uh, C.
C?
C is in cat.
Okay. Yeah, D.
D?
Workers comp- A.
And A.
And, um...
All right.
And I.
And I. Okay. So, colleagues, we're pulling A, C, D, and I to be, um...
What did you say?
Question. Was it D? Did we say D?
Did you say I?
Yes. A is in apple, C is in cat, D is in dog, and I is in ice.
Okay. The agenda I have doesn't have an item I. What is item I?
Uh, it is the agreement between a mastery prep and Jackson Public Schools. Mrs. Thomas is the, um...
And is this more up-to-date than the agenda that was sent yesterday?
Yes.
I believe it is, because we had some contracts that were outstanding from yesterday. So, the...
So then, what is item G and H?
Okay, item G is the approval of the consulting services agreement between Bailey Education Group and Jackson Public Schools. Item H is recommended approval of two thousand seventeen through two thousand eighteen district professional development plan.
It would have been nice to have notified that the agenda had been updated since yesterday when we were emailed.
I would think, uh, Ms. Williams, did we get an updated agenda mail to us today?
Um, just a, um, no.
Okay, um, are, are you not able to pull your, your current one, Mr. Oppenheimer?
I, I have through item F.
Okay. It's online? It's, it's up, it's updated and novice?
I, I will pull it up.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm fine with proceed- proceeding as, as we just said.
Okay.
Yeah, just wanted to note, mi- many of these were, uh, obli- were a part of the, um, dollars that had to be obligated by September thirtieth, and so these are, uh, it was necessary to make sure these items were board-approved before they can be obligated. So, some of those are tied to, to that process.
Okay. When, when they sent out the email early with the agenda, it was noted that some of other contracts were coming forth, and I believe these are the ones that actually were added in. Okay, so we're gonna take B, E, F, G, and H. Can I get an, a motion on those, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have it moved by Mr. Jones, and second by Mrs. Johnson. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Oppenheimer?
I'm gonna abstain, since I didn't have time to read those items.
Okay, are you abstaining from all of them, or just the ones beyond F?
Well, the motion is for all of them, so unless he's abstaining from the entire motion.
Okay.
I, I, I'm abstaining from all of them, that's all right.
From all of them, okay. So, if that's the case, we have three yays and one nay. Thank you.
Abstention.
One abstention, I'm sorry.
Abstain, not, not abstention.
All right. Now, let's, um, go to item A.
Yeah, okay. Um, I know we, we had extensive, um...
Ms. Kristler is coming.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the board president, Ms. Sims, and interim superintendent, Dr. Murray, you have before you a recommendation to approve the workers' compensation insurance policy for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. The district purchases this policy each year to transfer the total cost of risk for employee injuries to an insurance carrier, and it also keeps the district in compliance with the Mississippi Workers Compensation Act.
Okay, go ahead, Mrs. Jones.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kristler. How has this, uh, current contract been performing? Are we saving, or, or have we seen any, uh, decline in, in, uh, uh, claim, so to speak?
Yes, sir. Um, this policy year is incomplete, but, um, the claims are trending downward, and we are seeing or realizing a savings of three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars this policy year.
Is that saving attributed to the contract, or attributed to lower claims?
Um, it's, it's a partnership, a relationship that we have with Liberty, as well as the claims trending downward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good deal.
Any other questions? Mr. Oppenheimer, do you have any questions for A?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion? Ms. Kristler is coming.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the Board President, Ms. Sims, and interim Superintendent, Dr. Murray. You have before you a recommendation to approve the workers' compensation insurance policy for two thousand seventeen, twenty eighteen. The district purchases this policy each year to transfer the total cost of risk for employee injuries to an insurance carrier. And it also keeps the district in compliance with the Mississippi Workers' Compensation Act.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Ms. Kristler. How has this current contract been performing? Are we saving or have we seen any decline in claims, so to speak?
Yes, sir. This policy year is incomplete, but the claims are trending downward. And we are seeing or realizing a savings of three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars this policy year.
Is that saving attributed to the contract or attributed to lower claims?
Um, it's a partnership, a relationship that we have with Liberty, as well as the claims trending downward.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Oppenheimer, do you have any questions for A?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oppenheimer, second by Mr. Jones. All in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Oppenheimer, okay, that would be a unanimous vote. Thank you, Ms. Kristler. All right, now we're gonna move on to item C. Mrs. Bingham.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Basically, before you have the contract agreement for the approval of, between CARES School, CARE slash Canopy School, and Jackson Public School District. We're actually wanting to use CARES for a continuum of services for our children that are on autism spectrum disorder to address the more severe needs of those students with that disability.
All right. How many students do we have with those designation?
Well, it hasn't been predetermined that we're gonna use that facility, but we want to have it as an option.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones. You have a question? Dad, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Bingham, for presenting this to us. Can you just talk about the difference between what CARES does versus what the day treatment center does that the district runs? And then also what Mill Creek does, which is what we voted on at the last meeting?
Right. CARES, our focus would be more, like I said, for children with autism spectrum disorder. So, it's gonna focus more on applied behavior analysis therapy. It's gonna work on, it's a smaller environment. The therapist over there focuses more on treating their particular needs. Where Mill Creek and the day treatment focus more on the mental health and the behavior side, CARES is gonna really focus on those applied behavior analysis therapy techniques.
So, and I didn't quite hear Ms. Sims' questions. I don't know if it's the same question, but I have. Do we have a sense of about how many students right now would be going over to CARES? Should we approve this contract?
No, because we can't predetermine that that would be the placement. But we have a few students that we feel like, we know we're addressing their current situation. There's things that we just feel like they need a little bit more. So, we want to be able to have options when we do have our IEP meetings to suggest, okay, this is the next continuum of services for these students.
Okay. And then my other question is, I know CARES used to use shots, medical shots, to, you know, essentially induce children into, I don't want to say comas, but whatever medical term is for getting them to like calm down and all that kind of stuff. Do we know if they still use those?
They do not. I actually followed up after the question. And they name, or they call it pharmaceutical restraints, and they do not use that technique with day treatment students.
And would any of our children be going to the residential treatment, overnight residential treatment?
Well, the program side that we would want to use is the day treatment facility.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. One more question, Mr. Jones.
Yes, please. Thank you so much. Okay, just for clarity, you're saying additional options. What did you, what was our referral or from last year in terms of students that may find themselves with, being diagnosed, I guess, with autism? And then students that mentally, as I think you basically placed it? What were the, what options did you come up with and say we need to add additional service provider based on what our day treatment center is structured to do? How did you come up with this?
Last year, there was not an option in place. Last year, we did not use this facility at all to focus on those students with autism. And just because of the increase of diagnosis, increase of the more severe needs in our schools, this is why we're presenting this as an option.
Okay. Would there be an overlap with the increase in diagnosis that you mentioned? Would there be an overlap with our day treatment? Do we have, I guess I'm getting to, is there appropriate staff at the day treatment center that's able to provide some level of service here or what?
They are. They are able to provide some levels. You're right, you're correct. So, it wouldn't be that every student that's been diagnosed with autism would automatically go to CARES. No, sir. We would have to basically base it on the student's needs, the IEP committee determination to determine what would be the best placement for this student.
Okay. How will this process include that communication with the parent?
The parent will be invited to every meeting, every step of the way. Before we make any decisions, that parent is invited to all IEP meetings.
Okay. I guess, let me actually be clear because I want to make sure, because I know this is a big concern that's been pointed out in a lot of spaces. Okay, so we're saying that when the parent is in there with their child in his IEP meeting, in the structure of that meeting, we, there is someone there to talk or provide some level of explanation of why this recommendation is being made for, say, CARES versus Mill Creek versus the other facility.
Yes, sir.
Versus so on. So, everybody's on the, is kinda have a clear understanding of why and who and where all this is.
Yes, sir. You would have a, that's what your IEP committee team is made up of, members with different expertise. So, you would definitely have someone there to present each facility and what they have to offer. And the team would then decide what is the best placement for the student.
Okay. Now, how does Heinz Behavior help play a role in this?
Now, Heinz Behavior Health is an outside agreement. I think I would have to ask more questions on what exactly they provide. But Heinz Behavior Health is not contracted through exceptional education.
Okay, well, I thought we approved something last board meeting with Heinz Behavior to provide some level.
It's not specifically for, not specifically for exceptional students with...
Now, we use Marion, are you talking Marion counseling?
Well, I know I'm saying Marion counseling, but I do know when you mentioned autism and mentioned some other behavior, excuse me, modifications that need, will need to be implemented. And I know we have a plethora now of different agencies working. And I want to, at least one question I have, not to prolong this, is, is there clarity in how we're gonna use each one of those agencies? If both of them, several of them offer the same services?
Well, like I said, Heinz Behavior Health, I would have to explore and research what, exactly what they provide as far as, but they're not exactly set up for our exceptional ed students.
Okay, thank you so much, ma'am.
And I think it's important, again, this is a part of the continuum of services. It's not that we're forecasting that we'll use the program, but the option needs to be there in case through the IEP committee, the decision is made. We need to be poised to support those students.
Got you. Okay.
All right.
Heinz Behavior is for general ed.
General ed, okay, okay, all right.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, with that said, then can I get a motion for the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved as second, so we are now looking at, this would be C. Okay. We ready for the vote?
Aye.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we have a unanimous vote. Thank you. All right, do you, Mrs. Bingham, do you want to also stand and talk about D?
Yes. This is our, C's is the program that we currently use to, it's a web-based program where we type all of our individual education plans. So, we're gonna add, we wanted to add another piece to it as far as response to interventions so that all of the forms and documents will be web-based so that everyone can access the information. So, that's the piece that we're adding to it. It's also a renewal for this IEP system, but it's also, we wanted to add response to intervention documents in there as well.
Okay, thank you. I've got a question. Actually, I think we talked about this last year. Who is authorized to input into this web base for the IEPs? Who are the rising, authorizing people?
The caseload teacher is gonna be the case manager of the IEP document. However, if the child receives a related service, that service provider will have access to enter that information as well.
All right, and who would do the monthly review? Who's responsible for that monthly review to make sure it's up to date and brought back to the responsible parties?
Right. The IEP teacher will also update the child's progress every four and a half weeks along with the related service provider. We have data specialists in the office who do a monthly update. When the teachers turn in their caseload rosters, they go through the system to make sure each student is assigned to that current teacher. Like, if the student transfers to ProVine, then that new ProVine teacher needs to gain access to that student. So, we have data specialists in the office that handle that information.
All right, and with this web base, would the parent be able to see what's ongoing? Will they be able to access it, you know, throughout the day or is it just for our internal use?
It's just for our internal use. But at any time, a parent can ask for a copy of their child's IEP, and the teacher will be able to print it out, update it, and give it to the parent.
Okay, all right.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, you mentioned in your comments, there's the teacher. Then you also mentioned the caseload person. How does that work?
I guess they're interchangeable, but what I would say, the IEP teacher is the caseload teacher. You know, whoever is in charge of that student, have them on their roster, then they're the one, we call it the IEP slash caseload teacher.
Okay, so the general ed or the teacher is in the classroom that's actually in front of this?
It's actually the exceptional ed teacher.
Exceptional ed, excuse me, okay. Okay, your special ed teacher actually prepares the IEP or works in that meeting and so on, so that's the person that's actually updating.
Drafting, mhm.
Everything. Okay, so the caseload person is not a separate position?
Are you talking the data specialist?
Yeah, yeah, what, yeah, so are they, are they trained or are they, have they met classroom instructional guidelines or what?
No, they don't, they don't do anything with the IEP. They just make sure that the data is correct in there. As far as, say, my name, I might be assigned ten students. So, they will make sure that those ten students stay on my caseload the entire year. That would be their responsibility. Say a student left and needed to go to your roster, that person would be responsible giving you access now to that student and no longer on me because I'm not a service provider for that student. That's what a data specialist does.
Okay, so ensuring that the file is following the student, basically? Okay, but however, the information that's being entered into the system is done by the special ed teacher?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and there's no modification? I guess my question is, I want to ensure, you know, I want to understand how the system is, better understand, I should say, how the system is operating, as you mentioned, four different people with access to the system. And it's, you know, ensure that the parent is included in whatever.
And they're always included because once you, when we type it into the system, it's considered a draft. When you print it out and you have a meeting with the parent and every committee member signs off, that's when it becomes a legal document. So, the parent is always involved with, once it's printed out, we present it at the IEP meeting, everyone involved with that student will sign. That makes up your IEP committee.
Okay, because you also mentioned interventions and so...
Now, interventionists will only have access to RTI, which is response to intervention forms. They won't have access to the IEPs because they're not a service provider for that student. So, it would just be one system where all the programs are housed, but they will only have certain rights to certain parts of that dashboard.
Okay, that's what I need to know. Thank you so much.
All right, I just want to just ask one more question. We are really getting deep into this. Probably too deep, but anyway, my question is, is there a, there is a tracking system, it seems. Is there a tickler that will let you know you need to have a meeting within so many days? Is there a notification system to all that are involved that we're five days out or we're ten days out before we need to make another report or a, the next level?
Using this current system, it does not have a reminder or anything like that, but we have human, we have human reminders that remind the staff, you know, you know, the IEP due is, date is this. That's why they turn in that monthly roster. So, we have program services that are responsible for reminding the teachers. You know, your IEP date is August thirty-first, you need to make sure you have a meeting before this date. So, it's all the human part of that is the reminder, not the actual computer system.
So, do we have a procedure that the humans will be?
Mhm, right. Like, eligibility is in our procedures, that they must redo eligibility six months in advance. IEPs must be done annually, so there's all procedures for those.
All right. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Thank you so much. So, these individualized education plans, is it minimum done annually?
Yes.
Okay. What is our average touch or average pullback up if annually is where we're having to touch, you know, having?
Oh, no, you're, we're touching it every four and a half weeks because we're updating progress.
Okay, okay.
But an annual meeting is required, like the annual meeting, you must meet with the parent annually every year to discuss the progress and to determine what they're gonna work on the following, the upcoming year. But we're touching it every four and a half weeks.
Okay, so how often are we talking with the parent then? How often you all talking with the parent? Versus one time annually because that would, if there are some corrections that need to be made?
Oh, yeah, we can have a meeting at any time. The parent can either initiate the meeting or we can initiate the meeting. If we feel like the child is not successful with the current goals, if grades are not reflecting progress, then we will call an IEP meeting. So, it's just, like I said, it's required by the state annually, however, we meet more than that, depending on the success or the lack of success of that student.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I mean to piggyback on your question.
All right, all right. Okay.
Thank you so much.
We're concerned that our kids are getting the most appropriate assessment and that they can achieve at their greatest level, so that's why we're asking these questions. Okay, can we get a motion for the floor for item D as in David?
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved by Mr. Jones, second by Mr. Oppenheimer. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, that would be a unanimous vote. All right, now we're down to item I. Mrs. Thomas?
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The administration is recommending to the Board of Trustees the approval of mastery prep to serve as lead partner for ACT support for high schools within the school district.
I've got a question. What is their success pass, this particular group?
Okay, if, I cited one particular example that had similar demographics to what we have, and it was in Louisiana. And they serviced approximately seven hundred and fifty students, and their average composite score increased from sixteen point nine to eighteen point nine in one school year. And also, they worked with Moore High School last year. And this school year, with the proficiency rate, that means that they had an eighteen on the English or twenty-two on reading and a twenty-two on mathematics. So, that's how the state determines whether a particular student is proficient. And their proficiency was thirty point six percent, which is almost fifty percent higher than any other high school in our district.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, thank you so much for what you do. Okay, how will this organization here work with the current ACT teachers or instructors that we have? How does, and then based on the current matrix or that you're using, how will this show up where we are?
Okay. To answer your first question, they're gonna provide onsite professional development for our teachers. And we're targeting our juniors because these are the students that'll be taking the state ACT. So, we're gonna target those teachers who will be providing ACT supports to those junior students. We have some schools who offer ACT prep, so it'll be those ACT prep teachers, also our English eleven teachers, our Algebra II, Geometry, Algebra III teachers, also our science teachers for science, and also our history teachers. History teachers can also piggyback with reading.
Okay. How are we, how would this process ensure that all juniors, which is state required, are going through these trainings or through these classes?
Well, first of all, ACT is gonna, this mastery prep is gonna provide a diagnostic testing. So, at the beginning, we'll do an online diagnostic testing, which will give us some intensive reports on where the students are. So, based on where the students are, they're gonna give a prescription. With this program, they'll get resources, they'll get online access to online ACT practice tests with strategies on how to actually correct whatever deficiencies they have. It also comes with a boot camp for the schools. So, they'll actually come in and they're gonna conduct boot camps with the teachers and the students.
Okay, all right. Well, this, you know, we're taking the test and using, because you mentioned the boot camps. Well, the boot camps, and the reason I ask this question and getting diving in because I know the graduation requirements have changed and this weighs heavily on, in this space. With the, will this boot camp include working with the calculators?
It does. They do all four areas, English, reading, mathematics, and science. They do all four areas, English, reading, uh, mathematics, and science. So they will get supports in all areas. And including in that, it includes the graphing calculators and, and how to approach. And with the boot camps, it's not strictly just content, it's strategies. And we know that with students going in, they have to have a strategy in order to be successful on the test. Um, a couple of things, this is really impactful for us because it's, it's a double-edged sword. Because not only can the students earn a seventeen, which will help them if they don't pass a subject area exam, they can use this in lieu of that. And also, it, it prevents our students from having to take remedial courses, uh, once they go into college. If they meet those college readiness standards, then that allows them to go ahead and take the courses they need to take without having to take any remedial courses.
Okay, how are we encouraging that piece, particularly with the early college, um, or the dual enrollment piece, which is the next question? But I'm glad you, can you kind of leave a little bit more?
Well, actually, those students that are in dual credit courses, a lot of times, they've already met the college readiness standards because they have to have a certain score in order to even get in. But if those students are juniors, then of course, they'll receive the same support.
Mhm, mhm, so this will increase the number of, of, of students that do enroll, taking, uh?
If those students are juniors. A lot of times, um, the students enrolled in dual credit or dual enrollment courses are generally seniors for some. And we also have some juniors that are enrolled. So those students that are juniors will also receive the same supports.
Okay, all right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Ms. Thomas, now this will, these, this will take place between now and December first.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, so will the students then take a December ACT?
They will take a December, um, test. Um, the diagnostic test will be given first, and then we'll see exactly where they are in December to see the, uh, the growth that they made.
Okay, okay. I think it's a fantastic idea. I'm, I'm looking forward to the results because, um, we, we can, um, use these tools to really uplift and really surge our kids forward. So I'm, I'm excited about what we're doing there. All right, um, any other questions? Can I get a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
All right, Mr. Jones moved, Mrs. Johnson second. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, that would be a unanimous, um, vote. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. All right, now we're down to consent agenda item personnel.
So move adoption.
I like it, Mr. Oppenheim, he's keeping it moving, okay?
Good evening.
Good evening. Any questions, colleagues? Are there any that we need to pull? All right, can I get a motion?
So move adoption.
So move adoption, Mr. Oppenheim?
Second.
Mrs. Johnson, second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
That was a unanimous vote, thank you. All right, now we have, uh, we have voted on all our consent agenda items, general and personnel. Now we're down to other business.
I, I have a couple of items I'd like to talk about.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Oppenheim.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Ms. Sims. Um, colleagues, uh, Ms. Ursula came before us and asked about the name changes again. And given kind of the, the funny situation that we find ourselves in, um, I know we weren't able to meet as a committee to kind of plan out this process, but one of the ideas was to, um, to really just put it into the hands of the PTAs to, uh, decide what names they will have, uh, starting next school year and use their own process. So I'd like to make a motion that the local PTAs at Davis, George, and Lee Elementary decide what new names to have for their schools through their own processes and to have them in place by the beginning of the next school year in accordance with policy FH on facility names. So I'm, I'm putting that motion forward.
A second.
All right, would you repeat that motion once again, Mr. Oppenheim?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be happy to email it to you. But, uh, I, I motioned that the local PTAs at Davis, George, and Lee Elementary School decide what new names to have for their schools through their own processes and to have them in place by the beginning of the twenty eighteen, nineteen school year in accordance with policy FH on facility names.
Okay, I would like to actually amend that to include, uh, the general, um, PTA, uh, our, our community PTA. I think we need to outreach a little bit more versus just the current PTA there at those schools. So we would?
I, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
I would like to amend it to encourage the community, not just the local PTAs that are currently at those schools. So they would, um, the PTA would develop the process but get, uh, input from the community as well.
Yeah, that's fine with me. We could say that the local PTA, working with the community, uh, Davis, George, and Lee Elementary, um, can decide what new names to have for their schools through their own processes and to have them in place by the beginning of the next school year in accordance with policy FH.
Well, uh, Mr. Oppenheim, now you, you and Mrs. Johnson, actually, on that committee, I don't know if you all have met, but, uh, I would like for you all to take leadership on that and, uh, not by the PTAs' own processes because we would like to have them definitely uniform and that we would, um, use this as a template or a blueprint for any other changes that we would, um, address. So, um, if you and Mrs. Johnson would, um, develop a process, um, with some dates and times and so forth, along with the community, um, determine how that is to be. And I believe it would be best to spring that back, uh, at a later time that we can, um, vote on it.
I, I, well, I'd like to push back a little bit that I, I have to put the process into the motion, um, and that given that if there's potentially a takeover, we don't have time to meet, um, this motion addresses that, that the PTAs, this motion addresses the process that they should take, that the PTAs with the communities, um, at those schools will decide what those names are. And of course, trust me, I know I'm going to be involved, but I don't want to put anybody else, um, out there for what their own personal involvement would be. Um, and, you know, if the governor doesn't sign, then we can readdress this later. But I think this process is what we would have laid out, uh, anyways. And our committee did not meet because of, obviously, the conversations around the audit and the takeover.
Okay, any other questions, any, any other comments on this motion?
Board members, Ms. Shepherd and I are actually looking at the policy. And I guess we have a question about the extent to which the board can delegate the authority to approve the naming of school facilities to another entity. Only because, you know, the policy requires, I, I think y'all have heard some comment about individual names. And then what the policy is saying is that it's got to have the unanimous support of the school board. So I, I guess, you know, we're debating over here the idea of whether or not you can essentially say we're going to give away our authority and responsibility to approve the persons that the PTAs with the support of the community can come up with. Um, so, I mean, quite frankly, you know, I, I, it, it would be a question of you could try to do it, but I, I mean, we aren't sure that it would be effective or, you know, I guess to some extent, appropriate. You're essentially saying that we're going to let somebody else decide and we are going to unanimously support the decision or the call of some other group of people that X person or X name is appropriate. It has the unanimous support of the school board. That's what your policy says. So I guess for you to do that in advance without knowing any of that would, would be a questionable issue of whether or not you can delegate your authority to that extent.
I have a question. Would it be, um, better, better stated then that, um, the PTA, community, and P-16, whomever would be able to recommend to, um, a, a committee that's been established by the board to, uh, to accept or recommend to the board, um, what their fin, what their, uh, naming option is?
I think certainly they can, they can do that. I guess the, overall, the question is going to be, to what extent can you approve any of this beforehand without having any of that information in front of you right now? You know, Mr. Oppenheim is talking about this is something that will go into place for the next school year.
Right.
Um, and so, uh, like I say, it, it, there would just be a question as to whether or not what you do today would really be an appropriate delegation of your authority. And I, I think there's certainly a question. I wouldn't tell you that it's illegal to do it, but I would tell you it would be questionable. Um, and that, you know, if it were questioned later on, or quite frankly, if, you know, the name that someone comes up with or one of the local PTAs comes up with turns out to be something that one of you doesn't think is appropriate or, you know, one of you wouldn't have gone along with, you would have essentially given away your, um, authority to question that, your authority to not approve that. And then the question is whether or not you ought to be giving away that authority in discretion now.
Uh, you know, I'm just gonna, like, I'm fine with delegating this authority. I think the community, uh, and the parents and guardians of our schools are perfectly capable of coming up with appropriate names that honor members of our community or simply just our place names. Uh, you know, Nor Jackson, you know, as an example of the place name. I, and I'm perfectly fine with delegating that authority out right now.
So Mrs. Turner, uh, with, with, um, Mr. Oppenheim thinking it's great for him to give that authority away, are you saying that that may not be a legal authority that we can do at this point?
I can't tell you, I've read a Mississippi Supreme Court case where the, the court has come in and said, "School board members can't delegate X authority." What I can tell you is that there are generally some authorities that are considered, or some responsibilities that are considered to be non-delegable. Um, a lot of times, you know, where we have some clear guidance is something like approval of certain kinds of contracts. You know, the employment of who the superintendent is. You know, if the board said, "Okay, we're going to let this, the local PTAs go out and decide who the superintendent is going to be, and we're going to say whoever they come up with, we're going to go along." I tell you, no, that's not appropriate. This obviously is not something to the same degree of that. What I would tell you is that there is a question. I think there is a question, or it's at least a gray area of because you have a policy that says the renaming of the school has got to have the unanimous support of a school board, whether or not that is a delegable authority that the board has. And, you know, I, I guess to kind of spring it tonight and do that without really any kind of chance or opportunity to research that, I can't, I, I would not tell you, you definitely could not do it. What I'd tell you is I think there's a question as to whether or not you can do it. That's what your councils both think.
Okay, a question then. Can we say, or, I don't know, can we, too? Can, can the motion be phrased in, in conjunction with the board? Um, that's been designated with a motion, it be able to hold at that, at any point going forward? Would it be actionable going forward in terms of saying, with the PTA or the community or whatever committee has been, been, uh, developed in conjunction with the board comes up with a, um, a name for, say, a school or what have you? How, how much, how much, how would that stand going forward?
I guess, I'm not sure if I'm following your question, but I guess ultimately, what I think the best thing to do would be that whatever action gets the approval, the unanimous approval of the school board. Um, and I understand Mr. Oppenheim's point to the fact that there may be a situation where this particular school board is no longer in place. At that point, you know, it's the conservator. And so at that point, the local, you know, certainly the conservator would have the authority to come in because, you know, this is another one of those areas where I'd say, if you're going to do this and to the extent that you have a policy that says otherwise, you know, we've had this question before. I mean, quite frankly, when it came to the election of board members. You know, this is an area where you have a policy that says you're going to follow a different process. Um, and so now you're saying we're not going to follow that process. We're going to follow a somewhat different process by not having it come back. So, you know, there's, there's just, you, and it's just, it's hard to give you definites one way or the other. And I guess ultimately, I'm trying to answer your question, you know, but I'm going to keep telling you, maybe you can and maybe it's okay. But all of this would kind of certainly be subject to the conservator being able to come in and undo it, you know, if that ends up being the case. But just for you as the board sitting here today, I would tell you to, you know, to be very comfortable that this is, this is what you're doing and understand what you're doing and understand that there is some question to whether or not you can do it. And if you decide, you know, if you decide to move forward with that understanding that's in the board's purview and that you can do, I just want to be sure you understand that there is a question.
All right. Any other questions for the attorney? All in favor for the, um, renaming or giving the PTA the option of renaming along with the community of George Elementary, I think it's George, Lee, and Davis? Is that right, Mr. Oppenheim?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any questions for my colleagues? With that said, we're ready to vote. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
That was unanimous vote, so we're going to move forward with this. Any other new, any other business?
Yeah, I wanted to, I wanted to raise another, um, uh, possibility. This is a, um, a policy suggestion that I had put forth, um, to get some, uh, input on from our attorneys. And I wanted to see about potentially making a motion to, uh, bring it to the board about putting a moratorium on the suspend, out-of-school suspension of children between pre-kindergarten and third grade uh, beginning January first, except for in the most extreme situations. So I wanted to make a motion, uh, to that effect.
Repeat that once again, Mr. Oppenheim, please.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, I want to make a motion to put a moratorium on out-of-school suspension for children between pre-kindergarten and third grade in JPS, beginning January first, twenty eighteen, except for in the most extreme situations. And I could define, you know, extreme, but maybe I'll leave that to the lawyers. I don't, I don't mean a, I don't mean a butter knife in the bottom of a backpack by extreme.
Is there a second for the, his motion?
Uh, Ms. Sims, um, just in talking with Ms. Turner, that sounds like it has some problems. Uh, if there's a moratorium on out-of-school suspensions, I think the code of conduct would have to be changed. And additionally, uh, I think if there's a, if there's discipline that needs to be meted out, then you would have to, I think we would have to look, at least the administration would, have to look at the totality of the circumstances to see what, uh, that particular child or any student, uh, had done to warrant, uh, out-of-school suspension. So I, I just think legally from the administration's standpoint, and Ms. Turner can chime in from the board's point of view, but I think that would have some problems, uh, with, with the administration uh, trying to, uh, bring discipline and order to the schools if there's, um, a moratorium on out-of-school suspension and, uh, we have policies that allow for that.
Yeah, I mean, by the, by putting the moratorium, there'd be to put a halt on the out-of-school suspensions. Um, you know, given all the research and the data out there about, um, the extreme impact of even one day of out-of-school suspension for children in that young age group and how it also disproportionately affects black and brown children in our country and in our state, uh, I think we've put in enough, uh, alternative disciplinary processes like Tools for Life, PBIS, um, uh, the other one that we mentioned the other day, I think it was LEEDs or some sound like LEEDs, um, with the Department of Justice. I think we've put in all these supports in place. So I would hope that at this point, um, we are able to convincingly, uh, say to ourselves that there really wouldn't be a need for out-of-school. out-of-school suspension of these children.
I do have a question.
Question, Mr. Jones.
Thank you so much. From our earlier discussion with Ms. Bingham regarding Heinz Behavior Health, which, which level, which grade does that go down to in terms of being able to work with our students or provide some intervention or counseling or what have you for our younger age students?
Heinz, I believe, does elementary.
And pre-K.
Marion does secondary.
Okay, okay. And how, how do we, or what level, when do they come in and start providing some service to those students? At what level, what button is pushed, or which stage is pushed to call in those for that help?
There's a referral process.
Yes, thank you. Okay, I'm a layman.
They're referred, then a group comes in at both levels.
Okay, okay.
Or, you know, sometimes outside referrals. They're already associated with the organization.
Okay.
Outside of school.
Okay. So if an infraction is made by an early learner, then at that point, a referral process is brought in before a disciplinary or suspension is, how does it?
Yes, we have a behavior support process, just like our teacher support.
Sure.
And so that, that's a mechanism that whereby a student could be referred, or a counselor could make a referral.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And we do have counselors in the elementary school as early as a pre-K student can get involved.
Yeah, counselors are in our elementary school.
Okay.
Okay, board members, your counselor over here conferring again. I think ultimately where you're going to run into a problem with this is you have, what's the authority of the board, and you have what's the authority, quite frankly, of the superintendent? By statute, the superintendent does have some authority to suspend the superintendent and the principal, to the extent that the board tries to adopt a policy that would impinge upon the superintendent or the school principal's authority, and these would be for your low-level suspensions. You know, you trigger due process procedures at a certain level. If the recommended disciplinary action gets to eleven days or more, more than ten days, then there's certain due process procedures that are triggered. So to the extent, number one, that what you're talking about is affecting what's in your code of conduct, what's in your suspension and expulsion policies, I think you're also starting to impinge upon the authority that the superintendent and the principal actually have by statute. I would advise you that this is one that I'd be pretty clear that you don't have the authority to do, because I think at that point, you're taking away some discretion from Dr. Murray that the law gives him.
And again, that's why I was asking the question, from a behavioral standpoint, what do we do if a student is, finds themselves in a situation not to, you know, dive into, but kind of like, what is our process? And Dr. Murray, if you have to explain?
Yeah, I mean, just as a minute, there's certain matters that come before the board automatically, that may be expulsions, but there are levels below that where not all disciplinary action comes to the board at all, and then the superintendent has his own set of authority and discretion that's granted him. So I'd say what you are now considering doing is starting to affect the superintendent's authority.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, there's, there's really no data out there supporting that it's ever a good response to given out-of-school suspension for a young child, you know, and I think it's mostly done out of the protection for, or out of concerns about adults issues as opposed to what the children's best needs are. And that's really where this is coming from, and it's something that, you know, I've talked with probably everybody, you know, in that room right now about the possibility of being able to move something like this. And so, you know, obviously, if I don't get a second or if it doesn't get supported, it's the will of the board, but, you know, I'm going to leave my motion on the table.
Okay, Mr. Oppenheim, if there's no second, it obviously is just left with, at this point. So we do appreciate all that you're bringing toward, for us. Is there any other business that we need to attend to?
No, I'll hold off from everything else.
Any other board members have anything you'd like to bring forward? All right, well, with that said, is there any considerations for going into executive session that we need to attend to?
We don't have anything.
I think there was an issue that was brought up earlier that would go into possibly executive session, and that is some of the information toward the board based upon whatever the interim superintendent...
You can close the meeting to consider whether or not, I mean, you don't have to state a reason at this point. You can just close the meeting to consider whether or not there's a need for executive session, and if so, what that is.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
So move, consider closing the meeting, closing the meeting to consider going to executive session.
Okay.
Second.
All right, this has been moved to second. Can I get a vote, please? All in favor?
No.
Okay.
It still passes, so.
It still passes.
Yeah.
I feel like this is really the end as we move forward, but really not the end. When I say the end, we're really not in an end position. We're moving forward. So I know that some people have thought, what is the governor going to do? What is going to happen? We don't have a clue. I'm saying we don't have a clue because the governor has not made a statement. So we're moving forward. We're moving forward educating our children, we're moving forward with the buses arriving on time, and we're moving forward as a board until otherwise we've been dismantled. But I want to commend Dr. Murray on his presentation to MDE. He's been a soldier. He's been a real soldier. Really, he's been a general. He's been a general, and he's led the charge for our students and for our faculty and our staff and our board. I want to thank Mr. Jones, Mrs. Johnson, and Mr. Oppenheim. They too have been generals for our students. I applaud my colleagues. So no, it's not the end. We're moving forward. Reverend Crutop said, we're standing strong, we're standing together strongly, standing in lock, in lock arm together to move us forward. We are moving forward. I think our theme is building stronger schools together. That's our, that's our mantra, building stronger schools together. So that's where we stand today, and moving forward, we stand, building stronger schools together. I'd like to just offer my colleagues an opportunity to say anything they'd like to say, and then we're going to close the meeting.
No, I don't have anything.
And they are good. Mr. Oppenheim?
Yeah, there's a 4:00 PM meeting on Thursday at the State Department of Education, and I would hope that everybody shows up and demands a voice and participation in that.
Absolutely, and there is a website, www.rjps.org. Everybody needs to go to that and sign in. Okay, with that said, we're going to, we voted to close the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Meeting adjourned.
Close.
Close, close.
We're talking about consideration.